Welcome to the beautiful Freehold Township High School. Please stand for congratulations.
Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. United States of America, we do not allow for suspension. One nation, one God, universal, the religion.
Soon to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws, Act of Seventy-Five, this meeting has been newly advertised in the Aspera Press, issue of August 1st, 2015. All municipal clerks, county councilor, and boroughs within the regional high school district have been newly notified and requirements of posting notices have been met. Okay, um, meeting minutes. Motion.
Motion.
Again. Second.
Second.
Thank you all. Any discussion? Sitting on Mr. Voice.
Mr. Acetola.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Canario.
Yes.
Mr. Corolo.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Callander.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Mr. State.
Mr. Terror.
Yes.
Mr. Moses. Yes. Okay, communications are on file on the fourth secretary's office. Reports, the superintendent's report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Moses. Good evening, everyone. We are going to open the evening with our biannual Violence and Vandalism Report. Folks know that several years ago, the state mandated that twice each year, a school district needs to report out on their data on offenses that fall under Violence and Vandalism. One of the things that we've tried to do here at the Freehold Regional High School District is rather than simply reading off numbers and reporting that, as most districts do, we like to have student groups come and present that evening that really are engaged in activities in the school that mitigate poor decision-making and really try to improve the culture of all six of our schools. We have six high schools, about eleven thousand five hundred teenagers. We know at times, students are going to make poor decisions, and it's all about helping them, guide them through those decisions, establishing a culture and climate where students feel supported and safe. And so you're going to hear from some students from Freehold Township High School this evening. So I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Howell, who will conduct this part of the presentation. And board members, you're going to want to come down and sit in the audience as the big screen's going to drop something in your mold.
Well, thank you, everybody, and good evening. Tonight, I am presenting our district report of Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse. And as Mr. Sanson said, this report is required biannually, and tonight includes Phase One incidents, those from September to December of 2015. In addition to reporting this information to the NJDOE, we also carefully review this internally, as it provides us an opportunity to reflect on the data and develop an action plan to work closely with our students. Our students are individuals behind these numbers, and we are committed to working with all students in all capacities. Part of that work is surrounding choices. Thankfully, the majority of our students made good choices, most of the time. However, we certainly recognize that when students make poor choices, our goal is that they learn from those incidents. So certainly, as a foundation for the report, we applaud the continuing efforts of our staff, our administration, our student body, and all of our families, who work together in order to continue to maintain a safe school environment. Incidents are classified into five separate categories, as defined by the state, and as you can see, for an overview, the first phase of the 15-16 school year, there were a total of fifty-four incidents. This next table shows each category more specifically. Violence included five incidents of simple assault, five threats, and eight fights. There were two total incidents of vandalism, damage to property, which included damage to the back of a school bus seat, and damage to a custodial car. Of the weapons identified, there was one pocket knife and one switchblade, neither of which were used in the context of a fight or assault. And under the category of substance abuse, the numbers of students found in the under the influence was eighteen, and the number of students engaged in possession or distribution was nine. The predominant substance used continues to be marijuana, which is really consistent with state and national data. And our district has a real sense of urgency to work with parents and the community to find effective approaches to combat substance abuse. In fact, in March, we hosted a heroin forum sponsored by the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office and Senator Jennifer Beck, right here at Freehold Township. The forum was a collaborative effort to educate our community about the dangers of heroin and the resources and support that are available in our community. We also have designated student assistance coordinators in each of our buildings that work with our families in order to ensure that students who might be abusing illegal substances are provided, most importantly, education and support. This next chart includes our HIM, harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigations for Phase One, both confirmed incidents and unconfirmed incidents that do not meet the definition as per the anti-bullying bill of rights. Again, we take a very aggressive approach in investigating all potential incidents, and more importantly, in educating our students, with a specific focus on promoting a positive school climate, which more than anything, has been shown to reduce bullying. We have a number of proactive measures and intervention programs in each high school, and this gets highlighted throughout the year, but especially in October, during Anti-Violence Week or the Week of Respect. We have a wide range of activities that educate and engage students, whether they're at home, at school, or during their extracurricular activities. In addition to our intervention programs and proactive measures, the most powerful tool we have is student-to-student education. It's our students. They're the most effective ambassadors for promoting a positive school climate, which is why I'm so excited that tonight, we have two students from Freehold Township High School that are part of LFD, but we also have many members of the organization, their advisors with us as well this evening. And to begin, Vanessa is going to briefly highlight some of their initiatives. Vanessa?
Before we tell you about our role in developing a positive school climate, we'd like to begin with the brief video that we created in order to assist us spreading the message.
Can you not understand me?
You're absolutely retarded, dude. You have to go faster. They shouldn't hurt these people, right?
Their reactions are slow, do you know what I mean?
Right, I know.
He's so skeekey, she'll never get by.
We have to leave a video on her wall.
Yeah, let's do a video on her wall.
Okay.
Everybody fix your ugly glasses.
Yeah, sorry.
So Hispanic mother and her young daughter confronted by intolerance.
But you don't speak American? Why does she just go out Taco Bell when he speaks Spanish?
No, she uses English.
That's America, he uses English.
You're all American, you're American.
You don't deserve an all-American burger. Maybe it's all Mexican burger. Maybe it's Spanish or something.
The what? Did you say that? You didn't even say that. Right, aren't you? Can you just speed it up a little bit more, please?
There's something dreadfully wrong with you.
With me?
Yeah, with you. How could you say that? If that was my child, I'd get you.
Good evening, I am Vanessa Varleck. I've been a part of LEAF for Diversity, or LFD, for the last two years. As well as LFD, I am also peer leader, a member of National Honor Society, and I am the captain of the STEM team here at Freehold Township. The video that you just watched was made by one of our current LFDers, Joe Santoro. We showed this video to the entire school during Respect Week. Every year, we create a video for the entire school to watch. Each year, there's a theme for the freshman class. This year's freshman class, Class of 2019, their theme was "Unmask Yourself." During Respect Week, we had an "Unmask Yourself" Day, where we invited the students and staff to not wear makeup, wear white t-shirts and jeans. We had a huge participation from the students and staff, and because of this, we have received a Gold Star Award and recognized as a no-place-for-hate school. Next Tuesday, Pete and myself, along with some other students, will be going to New York to accept our award, and also, we will get to show this video along with the activity that we did. Each student received a paper cellphone and had to write a positive hashtag. All the cellphones were displayed for the school to see.
Hello, everyone. My name is Peter Nielsen. I have also been a part of LFD for two years. I am also a part of peer leadership, National Honor Society, and a player on the varsity baseball team. As a member of LFD, we have meetings every Friday where we get to know each other and create a close bond with each other. In June, we will be taking an overnight trip to Princeton Blairstown to work on team bonding skills and team bonding exercises. To help the students and our three advisors, Ms. Michaels, Mrs. Jordan, and Mr. McGliory, we... Sorry about that. Ms. Michaels, Mr. McGliory, and Ms. Jordan, we worked it well together to conduct all activities that we have during the year. LFD would not be what it is today if it wasn't for our three advisors, along with our principal, Mrs. Higley, and our assistant principals. So I want to take a moment to thank everyone for what they have done for this club and what plans they have for the future.
Tonight, we are here to talk about what we do for LFD in our school. One of our primary responsibilities as LFDers is to create a positive school climate. Every summer, we send four students to LFD camp in the Poconos for a week. At this camp, the counselors teach us lessons about tolerance and acceptance, and challenge us to find new ways to promote it within our school. Also, each year, we meet with the Freehold Alliance to talk about our experience at camp and what we do within our school. We want to thank the Freehold Alliance and the Freehold PBA, who this year donated money in order for us to accomplish our goals and sending students to camp.
Respect Week is just one of the things we do here at Freehold Township High School. During Respect Week, we conduct different activities around the school to promote respect and diversity. This year, some activities we conduct were wearing white t-shirts, jeans, and no makeup, and presenting the video we viewed at the beginning of our presentation. We also host Breakfast Club every Wednesday that helps seniors who are in danger of not graduating. We are peer mentors and support each other in order to ensure everyone that graduates. At the end of the year, we have a big barbecue for them to congratulate for all their hard work they have put in throughout the school year.
Another important part of our role is ensuring that the things said here at FTHS contribute to our positive school climate. LFD hosts SLIP meetings. SLIP stands for Stop Saying Little Inappropriate Phrases. If a teacher or administrator hears a student saying a derogatory term or phrase, they will send them to these meetings. At the meetings, we talk about what they said or did, how it affected the person or people they said it about, and how they will improve their actions for next time. We also educate the students on how words can hurt and how to choose their words wisely. Lastly, at the end of the meeting, we should all share a word that affects us, and we vow that we will never use it again.
Some other things we do to promote a positive atmosphere is to decorate our school. Everyone likes coming to a place that strives to be a friendly environment every day. One way LFD promotes positivity is by decorating bulletin boards. We use the bulletin board that is located right in front of the auditorium. Each design we use for the bulletin board has a positive message that promotes tolerance and acceptance for our school. For example, we have used a Michael Jackson quote from one of his songs that states, "I'm starting with the man in the mirror, I'm asking him to change his ways. If you want to make the world a better place, take a look at yourself and make a change."
During the holiday season, we work with the PEP program in our school. We organize craft activities with the students and have a celebration with food and movies. The PEP program is a program for students with special needs, and it stands for the Patriot Employment Program. This is important to us because we want all the students to feel welcomed and a part of the Patriot family.
LFD works extremely hard to promote a positive and safe environment for all students here at Freehold Township High School. As well as all the activities we mentioned, all the LFDers individually work as hard to be leaders in our school. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think it's obvious that the frontline of any positive school culture of the students within that building, so thank you for taking the leadership role to the two of you. You know, I think that when your peers hear and understand and respect the words of... come from you and other students, it's much more powerful than powerful than when it comes from us. And thank you for the advisors for diversity as well. There's an awful lot of terrific work here at Freehold Township High School, so thank you. Appreciate your time. A few other items, just to go through in my report, just a couple notations. One, we actually, last week, had the senior senior prom of Freehold Township High School at the Senior Center in Freehold Township. It was sponsored by the Town Council, and Senator Beck, and Freehold's DiMascio, and Arnold, and Sheriff Sean Holden. We do it every year at Freehold Township High School. It was a wonderful event. Ms. Higley was there, and I attended prior to our finance committee meeting. Wonderful evening. It was slated to start at five, doors were filled at four, people were ready. But I think it's an awesome opportunity. Howell High School has one coming up next week. It's an awesome opportunity for many of the seniors in our community who may not interact with our high school students as frequently as we would like, and to really see what those students are about and what they have to offer. So I think it's always a great night. We also had our Cinco de Mayo dance at Coltsneck High School last week. What we do three times a year is have themed dances where we bring a number of students from our special needs population together. It's an awesome time for to make sure that those students have the same opportunities as any other students participate in the dance, and our staff and faculty turn out and drools to support that event, and something that I'm really proud of as superintendent. We've concluded, or we're about to conclude, podcasting, finally, in all buildings, so that we will be moving forward. No issues other than one day when the entire system went down, which I've reported previously. Also was able to attend the Medical Sciences Closing Ceremony of Center State Hospital last week. There's a fantastic partnership there with Center State. They're really a terrific community partner to us, not just with the Medical Sciences Program, but with our school system as a whole, and we've done some really terrific work with those folks. And the Center State Foundation is incredibly giving of their time, and the doctors and folks who actually show up to that ceremony to wish our graduating medical science students well. It's a nice sort of capstone to the four-year program that those students go through. My thanks go out to Center State for always supporting our schools. And this Friday, the NJR OTC Program at Coltsneck High School is conducting their changing-of-the-guard and awards ceremony. And just a note on that program, Major Penzak has done a phenomenal job over there. That program was named the Most Outstanding Unit in the Northeast this year, and I think ultimately placed second in the nation in terms of their score. So that's an awful lot of programs, and they're doing some fantastic things in that program at Coltsneck High School, and we couldn't be more proud of those students and advisors. And then finally, one of my favorite nights of the year, which I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to make it this Wednesday because I'm teaching class, but are the Basie Awards at the Count Basie Theater, and that's where they honor excellence in arts and theater from Monmouth County. All of our schools, I think, have at least one nomination. Howell is leading, I think, with somewhere around sixteen nominations this year, so it's always a wonderful, a wonderful night, and we're looking forward to that. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Okay, we have two board reports, one Finance and one Curriculum. Finance, we have Michael.
Thank you. Back on May 10th, we had our finance committee meeting, and it started off where we had an update from buildings and grounds, something that's going to go on over the summer. There's four schools where the ventilation system's going to be worked on. We have that work going on, or will go on, in Howell, Marlboro, Freehold Township, and Manalupin. And there's also going to be various other jobs with respect to painting, refinishing floors, and paving. We look at Coltsneck, Manalupin, and Marlboro, they all need paving work in their parking lots. With respect to the tracks, Freehold... I'm so excited about this that it's finally happened, and I lost my train of thought. But actually, if we look at Freehold Borough and Marlboro, those tracks should be opening up any day, and we're on target for Manalupin to be done on June 1st. We also put out an RFP for engineering services, and the administration has talked to several engineers with respect to potential work down the road with respect to athletic facilities at Howell High School. We also talked about the RFP that went out for insurance services. Do also want to point out that Department of Agriculture was here for a review, and the focus of this visit was really more of the free and reduced lunch program. A topic that's been in the news lately has been led in the water, and the district met with the engineer from Freehold Township, because there's new state guidelines, as you may have heard. At this point in time, the safest course of action is really on the education front. But nevertheless, we need to do a plumbing profile, and from there, you start testing fixtures. Bullpark estimate of what we're going to have to spend on this initiative that's dictated from the state is $100,000. And there is the potential we could get money from the state for all of that. And to wrap it up, we talked about the Transportation Department. We basically have a three-year lease in place with respect to the storage depot for the school buses that we have. It's got a little over a year left, and we just talked about the fact that there's going to have to be some paving work done in the parking lot of that facility. And we just talked about potentially how that's going to get paid for. And that's it.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Amy for Curriculum Instruction.
The Curriculum Committee met on Monday, May 9th. We had a light agenda in terms of the number of items, but we had very interesting and informative set of discussions. We first discussed the status of the Curriculum Guide revisions for health and physical education. Dr. Moore advised the committee that meetings had been done consistent with our strategic plan mandate, which is to promote student health through a strong health and physical education program. Those meetings resulted in a guiding philosophy for four curriculum guideline revisions, which began the fall of 2016, continued throughout the school year 2016-17, and by June 2017, the draft revised Health and Physical Education Curriculum Guidelines will be presented to the Curriculum Committee and then the Board for Approval. The approved guidelines will become effective for the 2017-2018 school year. We next discussed an industry grant application for federal Perkins Funds that the State Department of Education is managing. Our grant application has not yet been approved, but has been given some promising feedback by the state. The grant seeks to refresh and expand the Computer Science Academy at Freehold High School through partnerships with post-secondary education institutions and local businesses. If awarded, the grant will be used to afford a broader group of students some more real-life and hands-on experiences in the field of computer science. Finally, the committee was presented the first of two annual reports on our MAGNET programs. This report focused on the application data, whereas the second report will analyze the programs our rising ninth graders actually choose to participate in. There's a lot of great data and analysis in the report, but there are a couple of key takeaways. First is that the percentage of rising ninth graders from archaic districts who are applying to our MAGNET programs has actually stayed consistent over the years, at approximately forty percent annually since 2015. And the second key takeaway is that the percentage of successful applications, meaning those applications that were offered a spot in a particular MAGNET program or on the waitlist, that has improved. Dr. Moore explained that this trend is a function of enrollments, which are generally laid down slightly for rising ninth graders over prior years, and the increase in available seats in certain programs. The additional seats were driven by increased student interest over the years, again based on data collected and analyzed by our curriculum personnel. And next, the curriculum.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, next, we have public participation, and no one signed up, so that's... Excellent. Okay, next, we have the agenda. We have an agenda to the agenda.
Read it out loud. It's be added to Personnel Section, this is G14. Whereas Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education seeks to provide all students with educational professionals capable of providing students with the best educational experience consistent with New Jersey state law and board policy. Whereas Board receives certain information regarding actions under statements made by Employee Number 4098, which creates concern for his or her ability to interact with staff and students consistent with board policy, regulations, and known expectations. Whereas Employee Number 4098's alleged actions and statements are deemed, but superintendent to be, a potential deviation from normal physical or mental health. Be resolved, as the Board, upon recommendation of the superintendent, and consistent with NJSA 18A16-2, hereby requires Employee Number 4098 to undergo a complete mental and physical examination, G14.
Okay, so we have G1 to K3. Take the agenda in one shot. We have motion for the agenda. Thank you, Liz. Second?
Now that it... I had some to say. So I didn't know if you wanted to ask for a discussion or put it out there, whichever you want. Okay. Alright, there's two things. One, I just wanted to say that I'll vote for G1 with regret because Aaron Sinabria, who's on there, I thought was a key asset to this district, a great teacher, and just recently, one of the other parents that I talked to also confirmed that, so I'm sorry to see her go. And then I had a question on K3 with respect to that wellness policy. And the question is, where it talks about B3 with the on-campus fundraisers involving food or beverage items that hack beneath the SmartStack standards that Washington lays out. So basically, is that something that emanates from Washington DC that every school district in the country, when they have their on-campus fundraisers, has to meet the federal guidelines? Or is that something that comes from the state of New Jersey?
It's based in the Federal Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act, which is still being revised and tweaked along the way, but that still stands. So the long and short of it is, from midnight until a half an hour after school ends, the regulations are in effect, which, you know, gets certainly in before breakfast and during the school day. The spirit of it all is that they only want available through sale or otherwise those things that fit certain nutritional parameters in a school building. That's what they're looking to do, and it's going to affect fundraisers as well.
Now, I'm sorry, is that in... Do you know, is that a place now, where this is, once we vote on it, then it becomes the law of the land?
There's been a wellness policy in place, this is a replacement of that, and foods of certain nutritional value, there's always been the list of things that you can't have in a school. That's been augmented, supplemented by the Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act, and like I said, it's still being challenged and tweaked along the way, so... But as it stands right now... So, but as it stands right now, you know, watching what's available in schools could be the case for some time. Thanks. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing done, Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes, I'm old, staying from C.
I'm sorry, staying from...
Uh, C.
C, all of C?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Carolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Spankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, on the new business.
I got it. Actually, there's Jen and Kathy. Do you have a snap? Okay. Mrs. Sutera, would you be agreeable to allowing Mrs. Canario to amend her vote on C1 to reflect an extension as opposed to a vote in the affirmative? Yes. You had made the motion.
Oh. Yes.
You had said... Yeah, and this time, would you be agreeable?
Yes, I'm agreeable.
So whatever. I'm ready. So it is... Mr. Boyd, just make sure that it's do reflect the extension by Mrs. Canario to C1.
On the new business, Ms. Anderson.
So we're welcoming two new administrators to the Creole Regional High School District this evening. So, A, Adam Masari, please stand up for a moment. Adam will be the new SECA at Freehold Township High School. Wave to the crowd, Adam. These guys are Creole Township graduates, actually, so spent an awful lot of time in this building. Longtime teacher here, very involved in the extracurricular activities in the school. Was a graduate student, perhaps the finest graduate program instructor that we know of, who we took many classes with. So we know he's properly doctrinated. But Adam will be a wonderful addition to the administrative team here at Freehold Township High School, as well as the expected staff and is an integral part of the school community. So Adam, congratulations. What year did you graduate at?
2004.
Yes, Mr. Moses, you are that. Adam. And I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Diaz. Please stand. Oscar Diaz. He's currently the supervisor of World Classical Languages and Social Studies at Freehold High School. He is being promoted to the Assistant Principal position at Howell High School effective July 1. Oscar has done an awful lot of work here at the School District for us. He was our interim coordinator, along with Dr. Bleakley, for the Middle States accreditation process, which was a year-long, more than a year-long process that we underwent the past several years. Has really been a leader for us in our professional development here in the district and has done some really terrific work at the ABID program at Freehold High School. He's an excellent addition to the Howell administrative team. So, Mr. Diaz, welcome to the Assistant Principal.
As a Creole Borough representative on the board, I'd just like to say that the Borough High School is really going to miss you, Oscar. Borough's lost its house key.
That's right.
All right, guys, you know what we need to do. Okay, old business. The old business? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Kathy, thank you. Second? All those in favor? Those opposed? From paraphrasing a movie about one of my disnovellatives, "So shall you say, so shall it be written." Thank you for going.